This is a Prescott City Council study session. Welcome, everybody. Thanks for being here today. Let's call roll, please.
Mayor Mangerelli.
President.
Mayor Pro Tem Scholl.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilmember Bruceing.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
The record will reflect that Councilman Tenny is excused from the meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We have one item today. That's Arizona Eco Development Annexation and Development Agreement. The long awaited development agreement. Before John gets started, we're gonna have a presentation by John. I think Joe Baines has got a little bit of presentation as well. And then we'll have public, we'll call it public questions, I guess, just any questions you might have regarding the presentation today, since the development agreement is not public until later today. And then we do have the applicant here. And we'll let Jason say a few words here, maybe after John's done as well. Wanted to kind of remind us of where we've been. This has felt like a long process, probably because it has been. We keep saying three years and it's been three years for sure. In the public eye, we've had several public study sessions. But June 9th was the letter of intent that we agreed upon, and so that agreement was a monumental point in this process, and I think it's important to remember when that happened, and that was almost to the day about a year ago. Following that in the fall, we had a few e-sessions. I think we had a couple of e-sessions in the fall of 2020. We also appointed a negotiating team at that time. Mayor Pro Tem Scholl, Councilmember Bruceing, and myself. So that team went together to work together with the applicant the first week of January, met four times as a negotiating team with the applicant. But there were 15, 20 other meetings outside of that, right, John, with yourself and the applicant's attorney, et cetera. And then we've had e-sessions here this year, leading up to this meeting today. I think we had 13 different e-sessions. We're gonna have a lot of space on e-session times there in the future here. 13 e-sessions here with the council to discuss the development agreement. And then I think it's important for the public to know just, you know, the number of people that have been on this project with this development agreement. Not just city staff, but a team of attorneys specializing in water, aviation, real estate, et cetera. And so, you know, we, there's a lot of, a body of work here that's important for everyone to remember as we look at this DA today. And really, this DA is about memorializing what we agreed upon, that agreement a year ago with the letter of intent, and really executing those deal points. And, you know, I think this is a good agreement. I think you'll see, I'm not saying it's perfect. That's why we're opening it up for some discussion here in the public. There may be some constructive changes from the candidacy, and we welcome that. And then we hope to see if we can get to a vote here later this month. So with that, John, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you, Mayor and council. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna start by sort of refreshing everybody's memory, and it literally was 365 days ago that we, that the letter of intent is dated. So it has been a year in the making to reach this point. But I'd like to sort of refresh everyone's memory of what the letter of intent says and does, so that, that we make sure that we're following that letter of intent. So the purpose of the letter intent, of letter of intent, was to set up a framework for a development agreement. That's basically what it was. And, and the idea was, is that once the parties agreed to a letter of intent, then it allowed us to essentially fill in the blanks on, you know, which ultimately would become the development agreement. So as we all recall, the letter intent was non-binding, but it, again, set up the path to reach the, this, this agreement, this, this annexation agreement, which obviously must be approved by the city council, along with some other items. And just so, if this looks familiar, it should, because this is exactly the same presentation with some minor wording changes. This is, this, the presentation we did to go over the letter of intent. So we talked about the annexation in the letter of intent. We have to follow state law, city charter and city code require for, requirements for annexation for both develop and development for both the North and South parcel. The land conveyance, the agreement in the letter of intent was, you know, for the South parcel, 475 acres plus or minus, and then 270 acres plus or minus of land near the airport. And then there was another 131 acres as part of the LOI that the city was going to, will acquire around the airport. And, and just so, we're all talking about the same thing. This is the exhibit from the letter of intent on the South parcel, the 475. And I want to point out that the 475 is the main body parcel here, as well as the sort of out parcels, if you will, here. So that is what was contemplated to be the total 475 plus or minus acres. The North parcel, again, the 270 is in the pink area, and the 131, the city purchase property or parcel is in this sort of tan, I guess tan color, best I could describe it. And then just for, for perspective, as we go through this, we're gonna be talking about some other pieces of property. This is Section 33, which is, which was intended in the LOI to remain outside of, or was, was planned to be outside the city limits. That's Section 33 here. This is Section 32, owned by state land. These light blues are state, Arizona State Land Department land, and this is what we refer to as the Granite Dells Parkway parcel. This orange parcel here, at the time of the LOI, and obviously currently, it was and is in, within the city already, so it's not subject to annexation. Okay, so a big issue on the, on the LOI was the, the land in exchange for development water. And this is, this lays out the, the water amounts tied to development units, and you can see, I won't read through it, but the South had a maximum of 850 units, plus a 200 unit resort. And then the North annexation has a pretty substantial residential component. The W parcel was intended, or was intended under the LOI to be industrial, and then other uses were, were intended to be a mixed, a mixed-use nature. And this is the rest of the parcel, as we, as I showed you. The Granite Dells Parkway was a mixed-use and commercial-use type development, between 50 and 60% commercial, between 40 and 50% residential, where it was sort of the caps on it, or the minimums, the minimums as far as commercial, maximums as far as residential. And then, of course, Section 33, which is allowed for 1,000 residential units on 33. Okay, so there were some conditions in the LOI, and again, these were very broad at the time, because it was, it was intended to be a broad agreement, that the, the, the water allocations I just went through can be moved around amongst the parcels, so long as South parcel doesn't get an increase in density. So South is still capped at 850 residential units, the, and 200 hotel units. The requirements were that the, the properties must connect to city water and sewer, and will comply with water use rules and regulations, and that, that applies to Section 33, whether it's in the city or not. An AED, the developer applicant, would pay for all the costs of the infrastructure, as well as all development impact fees that are applicable. Section 33 was intended, again, to possibly remain outside of the city. But if it did, this, the, it would incur, or will incur, a 30% surcharge, which is our standard for out-of-city water service, 30% surcharge on water, as well as the agreement, the LOI contemplated that the, the effluent would be used for permanent recharge. So consistent with the intent of the city charter on large annexations, that effluent gets dedicated to permanent recharge. And then it also provided that the city would assist in acquisition of rights away for water, sewer, utilities, and ingress egress for Section 33. The other part of the water use conditions was the 753 acre feet of water gets netted out by 375 acre feet of water from AED's Watson Lake surface water rights. So 378 acre feet, I think, is the net, the net amount that the city would be providing to the developer as part of this deal. Roads and access, there'll be, there was intended to be a crossing between, or extending Fippen Trail over Granite Creek, and that was gonna be constructed by the city, but paid for from development impact fees. So it was, it's not a taxpayer-funded or, or a sales tax generate funded project. It's an impact fee project. The city was also obligated to at least attempt to acquire the old Granite Creek Bridge. And, and then there was an airport-related agreement that the city would provide AED with through-the-fence rights, and through-the-fence rights is essentially a, a parcel that's outside of, literally, the fence of the, the security fence of the airport, has a, essentially a gate to bring aircraft in and out to the, the property outside, onto the airfield. And that, and that's a highly complex, highly regulated issue that, that involves a lot of FAA limitations. Okay, the resort, the resort was gonna be, is planned under the LOI on parcels K and L, which is consistent with the general plan designation. It was intent, again, LOI, and intended to be designed and developed to blend in with the environment. And then there was also an agreement that if the resort was used for something other than sort of traditional or typical hotel-type uses, that the operator would continue to pay the city an equivalent payment for lost TPT. The LOI specifically granted the resort an at-grade crossing across the Peavine Trail. And then there were some, some conditions or stipulations, but the LOI did essentially agree that the resort would get an at-grade crossing. That's why that's in yellow. Okay, so that, that was effectively, or essentially, the, the letter of intent in, in a relatively brief summary, and again, signed a year ago tomorrow. Okay, so what does the agreement look like? Well, the agreement used the LOI as a framework to get to this final product, or this final draft, I should say, except there are a couple of exceptions. Maybe you can call them enhancements or improvements, at least as far as the city's concerned. The exceptions, the five main exceptions are that the city obtains an easement from AED, over AED land for the North Peavine Trail, the Chino Valley, and Joe will talk about that in a little bit. The city also obtains a trail easement from the old bridge, what we talked about earlier, to the Fippen Museum area. And that will be across, essentially along the creek there, and I can show that to you. They'll, we'll get more detail about that later. The resort access can now be, the parties agreed, by a grade-separated crossing if certain conditions are met, and I'll get into that in some detail in a bit. The W parcel, which, which is from where the through-the-fence agreements were supposed to happen, the city will now acquire that W parcel from AED, so it kind of takes off the table a pretty contentious, pretty complicated part of the negotiations when it came to the through-the-fence issues. And so the, this W parcel now becomes a city asset, and I'll, I'll get into that in a little bit more detail. And the 474 acres, Dow 474, by way of a survey, will be restricted by way of the development agreement, which gets recorded against the property, as well as the deed that we, that the city gets from, will be restricted to permitted open space, and I'll go into a little bit more detail soon. So these are five improvements or enhancements that weren't, weren't in the LOI. So these are sort of adds to this, to the city's benefit, I think, that we were able to, to accomplish. Okay, so, process. And this, this, this slideshow sort of follows the, the development agreement. So if you look at this, if you look at these slides, and you have the development agreement, they pretty much jive up to, you know, this is at the beginning of the agreement, and the end of the agreement will be towards the last slide. So what's the process? It includes an annexation of the South and North parcels, two separate annexations, two separate votes. It requires, by charter, six affirmative votes to pass. There'll be a rezoning for the South parcel to SF6, SPC lodging, multi-family housing, and natural open space, and then an airport noise overlay on, on parts of the property. North parcel will also get a rezoning, and that's to industrial transition, industrial general, SF6, which is residential manufactured housing, again, more natural open space, and then additionally airport noise overlay. What also has to be approved is an IGA with Prescott Valley, because now it's contemplated that Prescott Valley is going to annex Section 33. The city's process requires, in order to provide water and sewer to outside the city, there needs to be an IGA with the underlying jurisdiction. And it's my impression that, that Prescott Valley is actually working on that today or this week, and may, may vote on it, I think, today or this week at some point. That's what I understand. I don't know if that's how accurate that is. It also requires an approval of a water service agreement for Section 33, and that's the standard agreement that we require for all out-of-city water service. And obviously, the development agreement needs to be approved as well, as a separate vote. They're all separate votes. The agreement provides that failure of any one of these votes allows the developer applicant to terminate the whole deal. So it is, it is essentially, I hate the term "all or nothing," but it is a comprehensive package that has to be approved, otherwise the whole thing fails. It, it can't be cherry-picked during the votes. Okay, there is a referendum possibility on things like this. These are legis, annexation, rezoning, are legislative acts, and legislative acts are referable. So if and when this, these votes are taken, and if and when they are approved, there is a 30-day period that is basically what we call a referendum period before anything can take effect. Essentially, after the 30 days, or on day 31, everything becomes vested or locked in. Okay, so what are we looking at in terms of development? This is the master plan. The orange on top, I don't know if I need to point this out, but the orange on top is multifamily or small lots, A, B, and C. The tan color is small lots, a single-family residential. The olive color here is private open space or natural open space, but privately owned. And this is where the trail that I mentioned will run up, up from here. The bright green is the, is the city, city-owned, or it will be city-owned property, is natural open space. Again, this is an 11-acre estimate here, and then the bulk of the property here. K and L are SPCs, or they're, they're, they're intended to be, by way of the master plan, resort use. Okay, the zoning parts, the zoning looks a little different, more specific. The only difference, as you noticed, is the two out parcels aren't part of the zoning, because they don't, they can't get annexed at this point in time. They're not contiguous to the city. I'll address that issue a little bit in, down the road when we hit some future slides. But this is the zoning, natural open space, K and L will be SPC lodging, the tan will be SF6, and the, and A, B, and C will be multifamily housing. And as we all know, our zoning is inclusive, so multifamily housing also allows for single-family housing as well. In other words, you can do sort of lower impact or lower density type uses in, in Okay, what's the North parcel master plan look like? The, the light purple is, is basically the city-acquired property. The, the green is natural open space along the creek. The very bright purple is here. This is the W parcel we've referred to, is industrial. That's industrial. That's, it's hard to read, but that's multi-use. That's industrial, and this is small lot manufactured housing, and that's where the, the up to 1,550 residential units can exist. And the zoning looks fairly similar to that. And that, so this is sort of a depiction of what the zoning is gonna, is going to look like if, if, if all is approved. Okay, so that, as you saw, the two large maps were the master development plans. Major amendments to those require city council action, and obviously, city council action means at a, at an open meeting duly noticed and publicly discussed. So there's three definitions of what a major amendment is. It's any substantial alteration of the list of permitted uses as deemed substantial by the community development director. It's reallocation of residential dwelling units from within zoning districts or from one zoning district to another. There are some exceptions to that, because as we talked about earlier, there is an allowance to move density from one parcel to another, again, as long as South parcel does not increase in, in density. And same with reallocation of commercial and mixed-use from one zoning district to another. That doesn't have an exception, because that would imply that commercial could, commercial, if commercial moves to residential, for instance, that would require an MDP amendment by the council, as well as likely a rezoning. Okay, what are the rules of governing this development? This is the, this is probably the single most important issue to any developer who does a development agreement, is I want to know what the rules are for my development now and into the future. And so what we agree to is that the rules now in existence, meaning land development code and other requirements, are those requirements that are in effect on the date of the development agreement. So land development code, meaning zoning, subdivision plating, permit requirements, all those other, whether, if there's hillside requirements, sign code issues, all of those that are in effect when the development agreement is signed, is what governs the development of the property. But there are exceptions to that, and that's this. So there are, the exceptions to the sort of freezing, if you will, of the rules are these. Any ordinances that are, or policies that are consistent with the development agreement? Any, any ordinances, regulations that are enacted to comply with other government requirements, federal, state, county, those kinds of things? Or any, any ordinances or codes or regulations necessary to adopt, or necessary to alleviate threats to public health, as long as of uniform application? Another exception to the rule is changes to fees. Development impact fees, building permit fees, construction permit fees, all of the fees that the city charges can be updated and are, become, become effective to, you know, over time, so there'll be different fees over time. Presumably, they'll go up, but maybe not. Those will apply to the development as well, as long as, again, they're uniformly applied. We don't have a history of adopting fees that differentiate between different parts of the city, so generally speaking, all of our fees tend to be uniform across the city. The exception might be impact fees. We used to do this weird convoluted zone thing. We don't really do that anymore. And then last but not least, any changes to building and safety codes or general engineering standards. So over time, as we know, we, we update our building code and our fire code. Those codes then apply or affect development, you know, that gets applied for at the time. So those can be changed, again, as long as they're uniformly applied and not, and not specifically calling out a particular, or calling out the AED development. Okay, there is an additional property clause in the development agreement. It is very much discretionary, I shouldn't say very much, it's absolutely discretionary with the city. If it's determined to be by the city, meaning this body, this city council, or a city council, to be in the best interest of the city, the agreement contemplates adding two, in this case, two additional potential properties, and it's limited to that. And that's these. Section 32, I showed you earlier, is that blue square. That's Arizona State Land Department land. And then the red, which is already in the city, is the sort of eastern third of what is, what is Granite Dell's estates. As you can see, Section 32 has some real value ultimately, if the city were to annex it down the road and add it to this agreement, because the highway passes right through it. So there's a large or significant part of it is likely commercial, you know, tax-generating commercial, and then as you get farther away to the north, probably would turn into residential. But, but if that's added to the agreement, then it's bound by all of the requirements that the other parcels are, are bound by as part of the agreement. And that's important, and I'll get, I'll tell you why. It's important for many reasons, but there's one really important one I'll get to down, down, again, a few slides down. The resort, so the resort's limited to 200 units, so it can be, it can be less than that, can't be more than that. Again, the language out of the LOI was carried through to the development agreement about blending into the environment, and, and the tax language was also carried through to the development agreement, so that the, if it turns into some sort of time share, even partially, which doesn't generate sort of nightly tax, or, or there's, there's still, the operator still has to make up the difference as part of the development agreement. I think the most important part of the South parcel resort, the add or the enhancement, is the grade-separated crossing. This provides as a priority that there will be a grade-separated crossing if one of two conditions is met. And I'll get to, a community facilities district is contemplated by the development agreement. That is essentially a taxing district, like a special improvement district, but it has, but it's broader than a typical special improvement district, which is usually for one thing, like sewer, streets, water, streetlights. This allows for many different public works, infrastructure projects to be financed, but it's financed by the, the owners and residents of the district, which is, which, if it's created, would probably consist of most, if not all, of the AED land that would be annexed into the city. So it doesn't impact general rate users, in other words, streets or things, and I'll get to that. I'm getting ahead of myself. But the, but it can finance the, the cost of the gray, of the grade-separated crossing, and, and the creation of the CFD is up again to the council to approve that at a, at a, at an open meeting. If for some reason the council doesn't approve that, there's still an opportunity to create a grade-separated crossing, but the city would pay the difference, the delta between the at-grade crossing costs and the grade-separated costs. So it becomes basically, doesn't basically, it becomes a policy decision of what's most, what's the most important thing with regard to this? And if it's the most important thing is a grade-separated crossing for the resort, then we have two tools to get there. All right, public and private infrastructure. All of the infrastructure to be built will be, will be paid for by the developer or the CFD. No city funds, including water, sewer, or street funds will be used to pay for infrastructure. It'll all be built to city standards in effect at the time of construction. So as I mentioned before, if general engineering standards change, then, then the construction has to meet those new standards as it changes over time. One, you know, recent one changed to GES was ductile iron pipe. This whole project will be subject to ductile iron pipe requirement, because it's part of GES. If the CFD is created and paid for construction of the streets, the streets would be owned by the CFD, which would mean that the CFD then would be responsible for maintenance and upkeep and repair of the streets, which, again, takes kind of the burden off of our one cent sales tax. one cent sales tax, the citywide sales tax on streets. We don't do that. We don't want to do that for water and sewer lines because we have to maintain those ourselves to make sure that those are properly operated. Okay, water and wastewater. This reflects the essentially mirrors the LOI when it comes to water to the project. It all adds up to about 3,400 dwelling units, 1,000 in section 33, 2,400 in the remainder, 200 resort units, industrial, commercial, those kinds of things. The numbers don't haven't changed between the LOI and the development agreement. As a function of, again, mirroring the LOI, as a function of connecting to water, got to connect to city sewer too. And then all property connected to water, again, mirroring the LOI, must comply with the water use rules and regulations. So that would also apply to section 33, whether it's in the city or not in the city. Okay, so here's your breakdown. Again, mirrors the LOI in terms of water of allocations. You know, hasn't changed. The only change is because the agreement contemplates the city buying that W parcel, the water that would that would have gone to that now is going to Granite Dell's Parkway parcel, which would be used for residential development out there because that one really didn't have sort of a water assignment or water allocation assigned to it for the residential use. So again, the total 753 acre feet does not change. It's just been shifted around a little, which even if the city hadn't bought or wasn't going to purchase W, that water could be reallocated under the agreement amongst the parcels, other than, again, increasing densities on on South parcel. So EDU is a single-family detached. That's the equivalent of a single-family detached residential lot, except that EDUs that are used on the South parcel, if there's multifamily, that the multifamily is considered for this purpose, a a a single-family use, even though it uses considerably less water. Multifamily uses considerably less water than than single-family. Again, the language, a little bit more in detail, but remains the same in terms of moving EDUs or water development densities around, again, as long as South parcel doesn't go above its current limit. And the and then this also, again, mirroring the LOI, developers required to sever and transfer its 375 acre feet of annual surface water in the in the Watson Lake for purposes of recreation and recharge in our system. So again, we're netting out 753 less than 375. And that that process, according to the water lawyers, is 18 months to more than two years. So it's a it's a long process, but the agreement requires that once, once the W parcel and the South parcel are conveyed, then then the developer is required to start working on doing that. So the process starts fairly quickly, but the end result may take a while just because it is a long, drawn-out bureaucratic process. Open space requirements, because they're substantial, open space in this agreement in the master plans and zoning, there will be no additional open space required. Doesn't mean that within the housing in South or North or elsewhere, that there can't be smaller parks or things like that, but it's not required. So all of the land that's being designated open space, whether city-owned or private-owned, it does way more than says satisfies it way more than city requirements. Also, mass grading was a discussion issue. And the agreement was that mass grading techniques would be allowed except for the hotel parcel. And that any grading or work couldn't be done until the plans for the resort are approved by the city. So no work can be done until final plans are approved. That way, it kind of limits construction appearance or scarring on the hillside there. Okay, Granite Creek Crossing. There this is a change or change to the LOI. The developer will construct the crossing. Again, the cities, it's the city's design. It's an impact fee funded project. And so the city not only approves the design, but also approves the cost before work starts. So we have a lot of control over it. It's simply that the developer wants to do it sooner than we have the we have the ability to do it. So the developers agreed to do it basically on behalf of the city and then get reimbursed their actual out-of-pocket cost. The Granite Creek Bridge is really nothing's really changed on it in terms of the the effort to acquire it from the county. And then it'll be the bridge will be able to be used for vehicular, pedestrian, equestrian, and bicycle use. Vehicular is a new add or a new a new use for the bridge. And Joe Baines will talk about sort of the why behind that in a bit. The city will obviously be obligated to pay for the upgrades to the bridge unless it becomes part of a CFD-funded project. That's also an option. Okay, some pictures finally. This is sort of a couple of designs possible for the Granite Creek Crossing. So it's a sort of a large low-water crossing. It's not going to be a bridge necessarily. It's going to sort of follow the grade by way of culverts, box culverts or traditional. So those are a couple of possible designs for the crossing. And this is the the bridge location. I want to say it's right. Where's the arrow? There. Joe, am I close? Here, right there. So that's a, you know, literally a 30,000-foot view of the bridge. Love that term. And this is a little bit closer. So when you come in with your warthogs on a diet on a bombing run, this is what you see. Let's hope not. So that's Granite Creek Bridge over Granite Creek. All right. Community Facilities District. I've mentioned this a couple of times. Again, it is a special improvement district essentially created by the council. The council sits as the board of the district and the property owners' residents of the district, which would be the AED development parcels, would be the essentially funding the district by way of additional property taxes. The last time I think we did it was Haciampa, which now is just on the tail end of existence. And we don't really have any CFDs in place. This is a this is a good funding mechanism because it doesn't burden other city taxpayers. It doesn't burden other funds like the streets fund, the one cent streets fund. It doesn't burden, you know, the water wastewater fund that ratepayers pay into. This is a this is a complicated but good financing tool to use. And that ultimately is up to the city. And again, this is what would likely finance the these grade separated crossing for the resort. Okay, open space. I think this is what everybody's been waiting for. So I'm going to make them make you wait a little longer to talk about South. The language hasn't changed or the concept hasn't changed. 270 acres of open space at the airport. And it'll be it'll be included as part of the open space requirements by developer. 131 point or 131 acres, give or take, which is a purchase of the other parcel. And I'll go I'll show you a map in a sec. And that 103rd, the purchase price of that is to be determined by an appraiser who's qualified to do airport land type appraisals. So it's going to be, for all intents and purposes, fair market value, which is what an appraiser looks at to determine a value. And then the W parcel, again, the city will purchase it, about 116 acres, industrial land adjacent to the airport. And that the purchase price, again, will be determined by the same manner and mechanism, which is an appraiser will basically determine fair market value. This W parcel could be used for many different things, airport-related industrial, non-aviation-related industrial, or even incorporated into the airport if necessary. So it really is really a very positive asset for the city. And again, it took it takes away a very complicated contentious issue that we had during these negotiations, which was the through-the-fence agreement issue. So it kind of removed that because that was a huge logjam that we ran into. So this is kind of a one of the many creative solutions, I think, that both parties came up with to solve problems or solve roadblocks as part of the process. Okay, so again, the 270s in pink, that's the donated land. This is the 131, and this is the W parcel, 116 acres. So there's, you know, the math is my calculations roughly 515, 516 acres of land the city will of private property that the city will acquire. Okay, and did a little bit, got a little bit of expert opinion, not a not a not an appraisal by any stretch of the imagination. The donated land, just the 270 alone, one and a half to $2 million in in value. That gets put into, you know, as a that becomes a private property that becomes a city asset. South parcel. The 400 and these were surveyed recently. So the total amount is 474 acres plus or minus of land in the South parcel. And again, I'll show you a map again. The agreement requires that, again, in two manners or two methods, as part of the development agreement that gets recorded against the property, and then as part of the of the deed that the city gets to actually, you know, for the conveyance, that the uses will be permanently limited to natural open space zoning as it currently sits in our land development code, except no campgrounds, arenas, or amphitheaters. So it is a permanent, effectively a deed restriction that that can't be changed, that will run with the land, you know, indefinitely to be used as open space. The timing of it, I know that's kind of a concern, not more than 120 days after the referendum period. Could happen earlier, could have, you know, but it won't happen later. And the only thing, the only issue that would kind of push it to towards 120 days is the appraisal. Because we acquire the W parcel at the same time we acquire the South 474 acres. It's a simultaneous closing. The only so we have a title report on a draft title report or pre-ESCO title report, and it's very clean on this 474. No weird mining claims or anything like that. Bunch of utility lines, you know, typical stuff out there. The big if or or on that is if there is a referendum, for whatever reason, then nothing happens until the referendum. If it fails at the polls, then and then the and the agreement then takes effect, it's 120 days after that. So that's a that's a kind of an important note. The other kind of gets that the city added to this deal were the easement corridor for along the Granite Creek between the old bridge and 89 and the Fippen Trail to the north. It'd be located in that olive area that I showed you on the map. And then and Joe will get into this. There's also an option or an opportunity to purchase up to three acres of developer land near the, I'll show you a map, near at the end of the bridge there for an environmental library and learning center. And Joe Baines will get into more detail on that. So this is the map. Again, this green main body plus these two out parcels are what was all we have always been contemplated as the 475 or plus or minus. That's that was in the LOI and it was carried through to the to the development agreement. So this is a survey map. So this map was created from the survey, this this diagram. That or that. I feel like an optometrist. They're identical. The bulk property, the main body, is identical, and it totals 463 and a half acres. It didn't dwindle to that. That's the that's the real number, and that's the real property that we've always agreed to get from AED as part of this deal. The next the next are the two sort of what we call out parcels. The reason it went from 475 plus or minus to 474 is a function of this. It was estimated this was about 11 or 12 acres. It turned out to be just over 10. So that's the difference between the original 475 and now the 474. The other thing that was pointed out as part of the process, I want to show is that this is the old highway here and bridge. So when the if and when the city acquires this, so let me back up. The concern here was this remains in the county and and it was county zoned. And so what's the city going to do with it? Well, when the city acquires this, Highway 89, this is in the city. This becomes part of the city. We can annex now this piece, this piece, the state right 89 is in the city, and this piece. So once we acquire the old highway, all of this can then be annexed by the city and rezoned as natural open space to satisfy concerns that people have had early on from the LOI. It can't be done now because we it has to be contiguous to the city and it's just not. So it's not legally possible to do. So that's kind of a some we kind of figured out as part of the process that this is all ultimately can, and my view will likely be annexed and then rezoned to natural open space. Okay, this was a based on certain purchases in the past, that 474 is six and a half to $7 million added to the city's open space assets. It's a significant amount of land and a significant value that the city is getting out of this in just in terms of pure numbers, not 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 even taking into account all of the use opportunities, tourism opportunities, and just maintaining it as open space, that that critical area. So it's an important, this is important, probably one of the most important things I wanted people to take away is is this number. So I'm going to turn this over to Joe for a bit, and then I'll wrap up after he's done.
All right, thank you, John. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, members of the public. My name is Joe Baines. I'm proud to say I'm the Recreation Services Director for the City of Prescott. I wanted to give you a little bit of perspective first, kind of a sense of space. So we've got a little video that we're going to play. I think we played it for planning and zoning prior to. Help me out again, Mark. Okay, perfect. All right, this is some drone footage that we had flown a few months ago, maybe as much as a year ago. And gives us a little better perspective of what we're talking about here.
So it's $7 million the land looks like.
So how do I run this this video from here? Okay, and I'll stop along here at a few different points, but we're just trying to give you some orientation. Okay, so that just to the right of the big rock outcropping that we see here, that is Stop right there. The crossing that they showed right there is really a little bit further up in here. That's the crossing of the P line. So that's all open space there. If you look to the right on the screen there, it goes back quite a ways. You see in the foreground there, that's Point of Rocks. Oops. What did I do?
Technical.
Okay.[1736.32]
Technical.
Okay. Okay, this is pretty significant here. This is No Name Creek, and we'll label it up here a little bit. This runs up down below the resort parcel. Okay, we're looking south. No Name Creek off to your left. So the crossing is more likely in this area here. Okay, this area we'll be talking about a little bit more in, in the rest of my PowerPoint. But this is right along, you can see on the, at the right-hand part of your screen, you can see Highway 89. A little bit further to the, or closer to the, to the left side of the Highway 89 is the old Highway 89. And this area here is Granite Creek runs through right about here, and this will be the park area that we'll be talking about here in a little, a little bit. That's the bridge we referred to. It should have some dramatic music here, but I couldn't talk over that. Just close this out. Like that. Yep. All right, so hopefully that gave you a little bit of perspective on the kind of property that we're talking about and the uniqueness of the property, not only in Arizona, but, you know, I'm convinced that in the United States is probably one of the most interesting pieces of property. It's got a little bit of everything in it. And I put our missions and goals for our department up here just so, you know, I could kind of explain the lens that I look at this through. You know, I'm hired to look at the quality of life benefits for the citizens of Prescott. And so when I look at this deal, I look especially closely at what's in it for the City of Prescott when it comes to quality of life, and it, and there's also an economic development component to that through that visitation. But these are just some points from our missions and goals, but I think they apply here, especially apply here when we talk about planning for future growth and expansion of our park facilities, lake properties, open space, trails, and recreation programs. So what is in it for us? The quality of life benefits. Well, it's the 474 plus or minus acres of high-quality open space. It's a lake-to-lake trail connection, which I'll show you a little bit better in the next slide on how those work. It's low-mobility access to the heart of the Dells for folks that really haven't been able to do that. You know, the trailheads are a mile and a half on the north P-Vine Trailhead and the south P-Vine Trailhead. To really get to the heart of the Dells, this would be about a half a mile from the proposed park. So low-mobility access to the heart of the Dells, really important. The trail connection to the city-owned Granite Gardens, again, I'll show that a little bit more in the next slide, but we own 35 acres that is just to the south of this property that we'll be able to connect to, that's, it's really interesting trails in Granite Gardens. It's the one that's got the 52 steps or whatever. It's a really great kids' trail. I always recommend it for, for families. We also, the P-Vine Trail Connection to Chino Valley, very important. We've been trying to work towards that for many, many years, and this is an opportunity through this development agreement for us to make that connection to Chino Valley. The Granite Dells Gateway Park, which is what we're preliminarily calling this conceptual park plan, and then the Environmental Library. I'll show you that in a minute, too. We need a library in North Prescott as North Prescott grows out. There is an opportunity to do that in an area that will need that service, but then to maybe, to add on to that, we can add an environmental component to that where we can do some environmental learning. So it'll be a library, but it can also function as an outdoor learning opportunity. We can bring in, partner with a, a number of different private sector people, like the Highland Center for Natural History, for example, that could teach classes out of there. The Forest Service has, has talked about maybe trying to do some kind of exhibits there to show what we have to offer in the national forest as well. So I think it's a great opportunity for us to bring a lot of services and things together, quality of life things together in one place. Okay, the Environmental Library. So in the map I'll show you here in a minute, that is, as John pointed out, currently owned by the developer. When I showed the developer of this conceptual plan, he was all over it. He understood that there's benefits to his future residents, there's benefits obviously to the community, and a lot of opportunity there. So there's definitely a buy-in on the developer's part, just currently that is not, you know, that it is in his control. So there's a lot on this map, and I'll, and I'll go through it as quickly as I can. But this would be the Environmental Library and Learning Center up here. Here's the old Highway 89 Bridge to give you that perspective, so we could bring people in here if you're going here for the library, or if you're going here for some outdoor learning opportunities. You'd come in here, parking lot on this piece of property here. There's a loop trail, there's actually a cave right in here, a man-made cave that conveyed the water when Chino Valley Irrigation District used that water to water their farmlands out in Prescott Valley. It was conveyed through here. It was a granite outcropping, there's a little tunnel there that creates some learning opportunities. Opportunity for a little loop trail in here that could be an interpretive trail that could also be used in outdoor classroom setting for learning. A three-acre lake, for those of you, when John talked about the 375 acre-feet of water that would be severed and transferred to the City of Prescott, that was what the Chino Valley Irrigation District and this ranch through their, their water rights many, many years ago, that's how they conveyed the water from essentially Watson Lake through a flume pipe that runs down through here, and then runs through where this cave is, and then runs currently out across the road right there. Well, there would be no need for that anymore if this development agreement is, is reached and the annexation is reached. That, that flume pipe then could be used as the spigot for this three-acre lake. We would work with game and fish to stock this lake, three acres, not, not a real big lake, but at least create some recreational opportunities. There would be a flat trail around that. I kind of envision, again, the low-mobility grandpa and grandma being able to take grandkids out here for, for a little fishing. This would be a little fishing dock. And again, this is about a 15% conceptual design. It's really some ideas on paper. There will be a lot more public input, but this is kind of a, an illustration of what could be, and certainly, you know, will change from what we're looking at right now, but I think we've got to start on some good ideas. This would be a connection, a trail connection to the P-Vine, which is right over here, that could be that low-mobility access to the heart of the Dells. This is a trail that Chris Hosking, our Trails Coordinator, and I have, have kind of mapped out, that goes through some really, it would be a highly technical trail that goes through some really, really cool country and drops into the P-Vine Trail over in the area of the Point of Rocks. We've hiked that a few times, and I think some of the council people have hiked that with me as well. These would be internal trails. This would be a kid play area. And when I talk about a park here, I'm not talking about grass and swing sets and ballfields. I'm talking about natural play features, you know, such as log features that kids can climb on, the nets that kids climb on, boulders, things like that, that would be more of a natural, a natural park. We've got two bridge crossings that could happen here. This is potential for some parking if you're just going to visit the park, whether we, this is privately held, whether we bought this or we created some parking in here. If you're just going to the park, you can access the park through here. If you're going to the library, just for the library, you've got that opportunity as well. So a bridge connection here, a bridge connection here. This one would be built to facilitate maintenance vehicles. So it'd be a little bit hardier bridge so I can get in with like gators and small vehicles to go ahead and pick up garbage and clean up in the park. This is the trail connection to the Granite Gardens, the 35-acre piece that we own back here. So there's a lot of synergy, and, and that's why the name Gateway really kind of stuck with me, is it really is the gateway to the Dells. East, west, north, south, you name it, it's all, you know, right here. In the future, I could also see a, a connection that could go under the highway here and back over to this property, which is the 10 acres that John was talking about. And we do own property contiguous to that, so, well, it's 10 acres, it's really bigger than that. We own some of this property here. Miller Creek runs along the backside of it, or excuse me, Willow Creek runs along the backside of it, so it's pretty interesting. This is the lake to, or the trail connection to the Fippen Trail or the Constellation Trail System that essentially gives us our lake-to-lake. So you could be at Watson Lake, P-Vine Trail, down through here, make your connection through here, go up to the Fippen, and then cross over to the Constellation under the highway where we've already got that set in there. Are there any questions on this? Well, I've got it up here, there's a lot of information, I know.
Joe, I think it'd be good to just point out for the general public that's seen this for the first time, that the only part of this that's part of a future negotiation is the Environmental Library location at the top A. The rest of it is part of the deal as it sits today.
The rest of it is part of the deal as it sits today.
It's a good point, Michael. Questions, comments from the council for Joe on this part here? Yeah, Kathy?
On the west side of 89, there's Ecosa property. Would we be able to connect with that?
We can connect to anything over time, as long as we continue to work on, on access. So in other words, to answer that question, there's some roadblocks in between, but we've been successful in negotiating with property owners for many, many years. The Ecosa property is quite a ways down here, but, you know, who knows in the future what this looks like? There's some really nice properties in here. Who knows what the future will bring? We, we can, can control what we can control and acquire what we can acquire as it becomes available, but there's a lot of great opportunities and... I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Anything else on the map?
It's a good vision, Joe. I appreciate you working on this. I think, you know, for the Dells, there's not a great way in there, honestly, you know, right now, really through Watson Park, Watson Lake is really the only, you know, kind of the, the best access. Otherwise, you're way down on the south at the P-Vine Trailhead down there by the Dog Pound. So I just think this will be a huge addition for folks that are wanting to get out, and it's kind of, as you already stated, but this gateway to the Dells that we don't have now. And, you know, it's going to be a place we can direct people to that want to get out into the Dells. So thanks for your work on this. Anybody else? Yeah, Councilman Sisca.
Yeah, thank you. So Joe, when you showed us the park area, and then that green meadow, not the housing to the left of it, but the green meadow, that's going to be a trail through the park, through the meadow to Point of Rocks, basically?
Essentially, yes. It'll connect straight over to the P-Vine, and then the P-Vine can take you to Point of Rocks. But it'll be a much easier way for people to get in, you know, it'll be a, you know, firmly compacted surface so that it'll be easier for low-mobility folks to get around. And I think it's a great opportunity for us to introduce people to the Dells that maybe otherwise wouldn't have had that opportunity.
Thank you. Anything else for Joe here?
All right, I wanted to talk just a little bit about the North P-Vine Trail Easement, which I've, you know, mentioned before, we've been working on for many, many years, and really through this development agreement and annexation, this allows us to, to make this connection. So they've agreed to, to grant us a 30-foot-wide easement. There is one piece of state property that's in here that we would need to negotiate with the State Land Department for, but it also has some value for the airport. So there's a possibility that we could, through some of that federal funding, pick up that property because it also has some implications to the flight path. So I feel strongly that we'll be able to put that together. This 30-foot easement in connect, in combination with that State Land Department issue connects us to Chino. Chino has worked pretty hard on their side of things recently. I don't know if you guys have read that in the paper, but the Yow-Pai Trails Association has put some work into that. So really, it goes past Perkinsville Road. So really, the opportunity to connect our communities is something we've wanted to do for a long time. We've connected to Prescott Valley through the Iron King. We have not been able to connect to Chino, but once we do that, you know, I, I think that's, that's an important connection for the tri-city area. This is that trail connection, so as we, this would be Fane Road or Highway 89, where you see the tip of my large arrow. And then we, this yellow line would be the trail connection that we've worked through with the developer. We need to fence both sides of it. We do have that money in our budget in case this is approved to fence both sides because there is an ongoing cattle operation in there. So we need to take that into consideration and work together, but we have been successful in working together with the developer to make this a reality for us. And there's the State Land Department that I was talking about, and you can see where it would have some implications for the flight path. So it does, that does help our case as far as working that out. And then you go up here and then across this property here, avoiding these two state trust lands, and this is the trailhead off of two south is right up in here. They've already constructed a trailhead, Chino Valley has, so we would just connect up to that and presto, magic, just like it happened overnight.
Okay, so kind of getting close to wrapping up. Wanted to point out, there's a couple more important points in the development agreement. There's two, two agreements in the DA regarding protection of the airport. One is a noise attenuation construction agreement that the developer will work with the city where, where noise attenuation or sound attenuation is, is required, so that when people are inside their homes and there's airplane overflights, the noise attenuation is essentially just effectively, you know, additional insulation from, from outside sound. And the other one I think is really important is the aviation easement, and the mayor mentioned earlier, we've had, we had sort of subject matter experts, two aviation lawyers, when working for us, when working for AED, kind of hammer this thing out. Again, a pretty complicated issue, but we all came, ultimately came to agreement on the form of the easement. And then the nice thing about this agreement is that it requires two recordings of the easement. One against the, the unsubdivided land, essentially what's called meets and bounds land, and then, and then when, when subdivision plats are recorded, there'll be a simultaneous or contemporaneous recording of the same easement again, so that when a lot, when a person buys a house on a lot, that, that easement shows up on the title report from the title company, you know, without any, without any issues. And so the, the homeowner, the home buyer is fully unnoticed at that point. Okay, there's some other legal issues. Again, I, I sort of alluded to this earlier. The whole deal has to be approved. It is a comprehensive deal. So again, you can't cherry- Um, so again, they can't cherry pick and pick one and not the other. If, uh, if failure of one means failure of all. So that's important, um, for, for not only the council, but for the public to understand that, that we can't pick and choose out of this, like a, like a Chinese menu. Um, and then again, if a referendum is, is filed, um, the city is required to rescind the agreement, uh, and annexation and rezoning and master plan. Essentially the developer, uh, has the right to, to require the city to cancel the whole deal. Uh, and that again, that's not anything unusual. That is not anything uncommon. That is standard language in every development agreement I've ever seen. This, this language is standard stuff in every development agreement. Because again, this is the whole idea behind this is to get some level of assurance, um, going forward for both sides. This is important for everybody to understand is that this is binding on the land. It, it's recorded against the property, all of the parcels out there. So it, it binds the land, it binds future owners. Whether a, a home builder, uh, buys a large parcel to then develop homes. It binds that home, home builder, uh, it binds the homeowner to the extent applicable. Ultimately the, you know, the last, the last owner of the property. So it runs with the land and it binds all success, binds and benefits all successors and assigns as applicable. So that's important to know. Um, this is, this is recorded against the land. And again, will show up, uh, as part of, it should show up as part of a subdivision, uh, title report. Because it does, it does, it does get recorded at the county recorder's office. I know there have been concerns, uh, and this is sort of the, the wrapping it up about, you know, what are the assurances that the, that the developer is going to perform? Uh, and, and I think the negotiating team would, can, would agree with me that the developer had the same concerns about the city. What are the assurances that the city is going to perform? And, and it's important to know that the whole agreement is contingent on itself. It is a comprehensive agreement that, that requires that all parties perform their obligations. And the obligations in the agreement are unconditional. There is no, there's no, people refer to as wiggle room. There is the, the obligations to convey the land, uh, the 474, the obligations to sell and buy the W, uh, the obligations to convey the, um, the 375 acre feet of surface water are unconditional obligations. And so it's important to note that as I go through some of the legal, the sections that assure, that, that provide that level of assurance. The first is, is that the parties agree that the, uh, nothing in the agreement shall require either of the parties to proceed with development, except as otherwise provided in the agreement. So that says that the development of the property is conditioned on the developer performing its obligations, uh, and of course the city performing, uh, its, our obligations. Second one is a moratorium clause. And if you look at the small Roman numeral two, this says that provided that the developer has met the requirements as set forth in the agreement, that the, the city won't enforce any laws or regulations that impose limitations on the development. Well, that is a, that is a right or a, 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 to the city. The developer doesn't meet its requirements in when it's supposed to. In other words, in the time that is, uh, required to perform, the city can impose limitations on development. So we have leverage, we have a hammer, um, to make sure that, that the obligations, uh, of the developer are fulfilled. And last, but certainly not least, probably the most important is what's called specific performance of a contract. Standard language in almost every contract is if there's going to be a, an obligation performed in the future and you don't perform it, I can go to court and get a judge to order you by court order to specifically perform that obligation. And I guess the, uh, in its simplest form, the analogy I would say is, is when you go buy a house and you sign the contract to purchase, then you go through an escrow, there is a point at the end where the seller has to sign the deed. What assures you that the seller is going to sign that deed? Nothing but the contract itself. And if the, if the seller fails to sign, you go to court and you get a judge to say, sign the damn deed and close this deal. And the, and the person has to follow the court order. I mean, you know, we, we still have, we still are bound by the rule of law here. So, um, so that, that is a, a very, very strong uh, enforcement tool. Uh, and again, if the city doesn't fulfill its obligations, developer has the same, the same ability to go to court too. So, uh, the agreement is, is again, it's a very strong agreement. It, it's a strong agreement. It's a good agreement. It's a great deal, um, for the city. Um, it doesn't mean that, that, that the developer didn't get benefits out of it too. That's the way deals work. Both sides, you know, benefit. Um, it doesn't, you know, it's not a zero sum game. And, and I would say that, uh, there was a lot of creative solutions in these, in these, um, negotiations to overcome problems. And there was a lot of stalemates and there was a lot of non-starter points. But every time we came to that, um, the, the parties came together and creatively solved the problem. And that's, that's what this end product is. It's, it's a, it's a bunch of solutions to a bunch of problems. So as you, as, as folks will see the agreement, uh, online, there's the body of the agreement and then exhibits A through W. So it's a, it's I think about a hundred pages, give or take, um, to look at. Um, you know, some of them are sort of mundane legal descriptions. Uh, and some of them are pictures and those kinds of things, but the, but the whole agreement is ready to be uploaded along with this, um, along with this PowerPoint presentation so that people who kind of don't want to read through a hundred pages of document can, can go and get most of their questions answered hopefully by this PowerPoint. And so here's last slide, the proposed schedule. Um, and again, proposed meeting schedule, June, June 8th today. It's the rollout, um, and exhibits, uh, the draft of the DA exhibits and the, and the PowerPoint are going to be made available immediately following this. Next week, a study session, which will be essentially a, a public hearing and public comment listening session. Uh, the following week, the same thing, but it also meets the statutory requirement for annexation, public hearing. And then possibly, um, as early as June 24 or, or June 29 or later, depending on again, uh, how, the, how, what kind of reaction we get, uh, a possible vote. And that concludes my presentation, Mayor, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Yeah. Thank you, John. Uh, good presentation. I appreciate it. A lot of, a lot of information hopefully helps the public to at least get jump started on, um, learning about this development agreement. Uh, will do questions, comments from the council, uh, for John or Joe? Councilman Sishtika?
My question to you, thanks, Mayor. My question to Joe is, will your presentation, the video be on the website?
We'll have to, um, yeah, the link was broken. That's why we had to do what we did, but yes, yes. Sarah assures me.
Oh, as long as you can find it, yeah.
It might not be like immediate.
Well, and I think it may be a separate link because the upload of the PowerPoint will be in the form of a PDF, uh, Adobe PDF type, uh, form. So the, the link would have to be uploaded separately.
Other questions, comments from the council for John or Joe for that matter? Okay. Uh, let me ask, Mr. Geese, uh, would you like to say a few words before we go to public comment?
Mayor, members of the council, Jason Geese, um, I'm wore out after watching that. That's a lot of work to get here. Um, I, I really don't have anything to say other than thank you. Thank you for sticking with it. It was a difficult road to get to this point. I'm proud of where we sit today. And I hope that, uh, we get to a successful conclusion in June. I recognize that as part of the process, public input is important. We've had lots of public input in the past. Obviously you have a schedule that allows for more public input. I think that we've fulfilled the requirements of Prop 400 multiple ways and multiple times, which is also good. I've never been a part of a, uh, a rezon or annexation that has had this much, uh, public scrutiny, uh, this much of detail, this much hard work. Um, but again, as, as a longtime resident of Prescott, I'm proud of it. Um, I, I believe it is truly a win-win deal between the parties and that isn't necessarily how it always goes down. So, uh, I was happy to do my role up until this point and I hope that, uh, I hope that folks look at this package and they're impressed with, with what their government has done for them because this will be good for Prescott now, tomorrow, and a hundred years from now. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Jason?
All right.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right. We can go to, uh, public comment. Uh, we have, uh, almost 40 minutes here before our next meeting. So we should, hopefully we'll have enough time for everybody. Uh, I assume Sarah, you have some folks on Zoom?
Yeah. So I received one, or I'm sorry, one came in during the meeting too. Thank goodness I have my emails on my computer here. Um, two comments through the online portal, um, that I can read through. I have one attendee in the Zoom with the hand raised and I have one comment card. So we can take that in whatever order you'd like.
Yep. And we do have comment cards back here, right?
Yes.
For, for folks in the room. And then just as a reminder, you know, we really want to focus on questions, uh, regarding uh, John and Joe's presentation, uh, you know, given the DA is not out to the public just yet. Well, it hopefully will be real soon, but uh, the questions really should be related to, uh, the presentation, uh, today. So, and you'll have three minutes. So, uh, whatever order you think makes sense here, Sarah, we can get started.
Okay. Why don't I, um, get the reading out of the way?
Sure.
Um, and then, uh, we can go to in-person and then zoom. Does that work? Okay. So our first comment comes from Deb Thalassitis. Some city materials indicate that you're taking public comment at this study session. My comment is actually a question for the city council. Why is the public only permitted two weeks for reviewing this voluminous and complex document that will forever change the iconic Prescott Granite Dells? Your press release specifically states the document will not be released until after this meeting and your plan is to vote on its approval on June 22nd or possibly June 29th. While the council has been aware of the provisions of this document during months of executive sessions, the public gets two or maybe three weeks.
Very good. Yeah. Thanks, Ms. Thassalitis. Uh, we communicated, uh, I'd have to get with John Heiney on this, but really, uh, earlier this year, when we started negotiations with, uh, the applicant, uh, and we started with a negotiating team and there were some in the community that wanted to see the uh, DA right away and be involved, uh, we felt like is important to keep those negotiations private until we got to this point. And then we had promised, um, that we would do at least two weeks, uh, of public comment.
Uh, the next comment is from Bonnie McMinn. I appreciate as the mayor has outlined, the work effort and time spent on all slide, on all sides. But the issue at hand for the citizens of Prescott is that the citizens have the opportunity to look at this agreement without the pressure of a 14 or 16 day deadline. What is the rush to a vote before the end of June? Council and staff have spent time with this document, not the citizens. I respectfully request that the timeline be extended for 30 days out for respect of citizens of Prescott.
Thank you, Ms. McMinn. What else do you have there? Anything?
That's it for the ones from the portal. Uh, and then the only public comment card I have from in chambers is from Tom Rusing.
Okay.
Uh, good afternoon and, uh, thank, thank you for giving me this time. Uh, my name is Tom Rusing, Vice Chairman of Save the Dells. After playing a key role in the development of the letter of intent, Save the Dells was excluded from giving any input to, into the development agreement until very recently. And consequently, we've had very little time to review this important, complicated and controversial document. We have concerns about many aspects of the document, but it focused our attention initially on several key issues, uh, key issues. The first is transfer of ownership, uh, to the city of the 475 acres of natural open space in the heart of the Dells. This needs to be assured and done simultaneously with any transfer of rights or privileges to AED, including water. A second, a grade separated crossing of the Peavine Recreational National Recreation Trail for access to the resort. This document, as it stands, does not guarantee a grade separated crossing and that is not acceptable. If certain contingencies are not met, an at-grade crossing could be constructed, which would be a disaster. Third, the DA provides no concrete assurance that the water rights related to Watson Lake will actually be turned over to the city. Save the Dells will be submitting further analysis and recommendations as we work through this document. I would also like to address the process and timeline, uh, put forward by the city to review and the, and input from the citizens. The timeline is not adequate for an issue this important, this complicated and this controversial with so many moving parts. It has taken several years of negotiations to get to this point. And to give the citizens two weeks is unacceptable. The people of Prescott deserve better. The Reasonable Growth Initiative, Proposition 400, requires a 60 day comment period on annexation of, the annexations of this size. The city seems to believe that the comment period after the planning and zoning hearings was adequate. However, as we pointed out at the time, without the development agreement with all of the details, the public did not have enough information to make meaningful comments. Not having the 60 day comment period now ignores the obvious common sense intent of Proposition 400, a citizen initiative. The development agreement contains critical details that will determine what the development will look like and how it will affect the natural beauty, wildlife corridors, riparian areas and our quality of life. It will also include details on the cost to taxpayers and the allocation of our water. The citizens of Prescott deserve more time to analyze and give informed comments to their representatives. The timeline put forward seems to be focused not on more informed public input, but on a strategy for the upcoming election. What is the rush? We need to do this right. I would therefore recommend that the council vote to extend the public comment period to 60 days from the release of the development agreement, which is scheduled for today. Finally, we ask the people of Prescott to review this development agreement. Check out our website and newsletter for our evaluations and recommendations and let your voice be heard by attending these meetings. And by contacting the mayor and city council. Join us inside or outside city hall when these meetings take place and let your presence and support be known. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rusing. Any other?
The only public comment card that I have from inside chambers, if any, does anybody else? Okay. And then I have, uh, one hand up in the Zoom call.
Okay.
Leslie, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you if you'd like to speak.
Thank you. Um, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It's Leslie Hoy. I have two specific questions. Um, one about the 375 acre feet of water rights. And the second one is about the community facility districts. When it comes to the water rights, the, the, uh, those water rights are part of the Gila River adjudication. And so it's fairly certain that Prescott would never get 375 acre feet once the adjudication is settled, which could be several years from now. So is there anything in the development agreement that will protect future residents and councils? When the Gila River adjudication is settled and it's found that they, we don't have 375 acre feet? Um, so that's my first question. And then when it comes to the community facilities districts, I did a lot of research on these when Kevin was proposing to have the land annexed years ago. Um, when a, a, a community facility district often works well as long as there's rapid development. But when development slows, the city can end up having to take over the district and this has happened all over the state. And I believe it even has happened in Prescott Valley previously. So is there anything in the development agreement that would prevent the ci, the citizens of Prescott, the taxpayers of Prescott from having to take over the district? If the pace of development slows? Those are my two questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. John?
Let me address the, the first question first, and, and there's a huge assumption made in the question and the, and that is that the, he, well, there's two assumptions. First is that the Gila River adjudication will ever be done. I mean, that's just, that's a reality. It's been going on for years and years and years. And so there's no telling when it can get resolved. And the second is, is that it's going to negatively affect, uh, the, the, the surface water. Um, you know, because right now they're litigating over whether groundwater is surface water. Uh, I mean, in it, in its basic form, it's, it's an odd, uh, it sounds odd, but, but you know, those things get, get litigated. So the, the practical reality is, is that So the practical reality is, is that no one can sort of predict the future on, on the, on how it affects the 375 acres or how it even affects the city's groundwater. We're obviously involved directly in the litigation and we're fighting to protect the city's water rights and, and that would include, you know, if this deal is done, that would include the surface water rights in that, in that. And that water, that 375 is, is the first right in the lake water. It is not junior to any other right. So in other words, the city's is junior and SRP has rights, but this 375 is the priority right. So that is a huge advantage in terms of, of water rights. And, and I'll just qualify, I'm not a, not a water law expert, but those things I can assure you are accurate. The second question regarding the CFD is, is that over, over the time, the CFD statutes were changed to, to sort of address directly those issues that occurred primarily down in the valley where a lot of developments were approved, CFDs were approved, they got started and then they went belly up during the bust in 2007, 2008. So there's a lot of, a lot more protections now in the statute that, that protect the, from the city having to sort of take over the development. And again, I'll say this, and I mean, no one can predict the future, whether it's a slowdown, a bust, or things just keep building, it's hard to know. But there are protections that get built into the CFD documents and part of the advantage of doing a CFD is the city would have its, its outside council bond attorney that gets paid from the, the issuance of bonds, so it's no out-of-pocket cost. The developer has its bond, bond counsel and those bond counsel work out all the details to make sure that the city is protected as much as legally possible. Again, I can't predict the future, but this agree, I can say this about the agreement that, you know, that, that like I said before, and I'll repeat it because it bears, you know, it bears repeating, that the, that the obligations in the agreement are unconditional. The obligations of the city, you know, to, to do what it's required, what we're required to do are unconditional. The obligations of the developer are unconditional. So, so you know, and again, we don't know the timing, the pace of the development. We don't know what, you know, what happens first or if things happen simultaneously, you know, in terms of what parcel gets developed first. Don't know that because that's really the agreement provides that it's up to the developer. They can do things simultaneously or do things, you know, in, in order. So.
Thanks for that. Anything else from the public?
We did have one more hand go up. Mr. Beverly, I'm going to enable your talking if you'd like to unmute yourself and you've got three minutes.
Okay, hello, Gary Beverly here. I'm the Chair of the Local Sierra Club. One of the things that very much concerns us is the possibility of a crossing at, of the Peavine Trail. An aggregate crossing is just unacceptable to us. The development agreement does give the option, the possibility that there'd be a grade separated crossing. We'd like to see the city step up and guarantee that there would be a grade separating crossing. That's very important. The other thing is that in the development agreement itself, I would appreciate having a table that lists the responsibilities of the parties, the cost, estimated costs of those responsibilities and the deadlines for them. There's a whole bunch of different timelines in there with separate contingencies attached and so that it's not very clear and it's difficult for public to read and understand that. So those are my two suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Do you want to speak to the grade separated?
Sure, Mayor. You know, this is an agreement with another party. So the city, there's really kind of, it's kind of pointless for the, in this document to say, we're guaranteeing a grade separated crossing. I mean, it, it, like I said before, the agreement provides two opportunities or two methods, I guess, for, for having a grade separated crossing for the resort. That's one is the CFD, which is a council decision to create. And the second is, is if the CFD for some reason is not created, then the council, the city can pay the difference. So I mean, I'm not sure how much more you can guarantee because ultimately it's up to a, a city council at some point in the, in the probably relatively near future to make that decision, to make the decision to either create a CFD or if that fails, to make the decision, okay, because we couldn't create a CFD, we'll, we'll, we'll agree to pay the difference. And that, you know, and I suspect that the public will demand that the city go ahead and step up and pay the difference and, and create the, the grade separated crossing. And then the other question, we can try and work on something like that, you know, and it is, and you know, and, and we can try and put that out fairly quickly, especially as to the kind of major issues, you know, we'll try and, and then get that uploaded to the same link. Won't be today, obviously, but we'll try and do that fairly quickly.
Very good. Thanks, John. Mr. Lawrence?
I just wanted to dovetail on a couple of things John said and he makes a very good point about two things that have been brought up by the last two citizen points of input and start with the second one. I think it is the desire of staff, I in fact, forget to think, I know, to have a grade separated crossing. And if this council, separate than the DA, needs to go ahead and say, we will do that if we don't get a CFD approved with the applicant, then just go ahead and do that. I mean, if that's an assurance that the public wants, give them that assurance because I think that's the desire of this council. That's A. B, on the 375 acre feet, I also know it's the desire of this council that those acre feet stay in Watson Lake for recreational purposes. And as much as you can bind yourself to that's what you're going to do, make a determination to do that and, and make that policy determination. If those assurances people want and those assurances that this policy board would like as well, just do it.
Right, good. Yeah, thank you. Anything else from the public, Sarah?
Mr. Beverly did put his hand up again if you'd like me to.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Go ahead.
So I forgot to mention my third point. Thanks for letting me back in. This is quick. It's my understanding that at this point, the Iron King Trail is owned by Prescott Valley and I think that you, the city should move to acquire ownership of that from Prescott Valley, at least that portion of it that would lie within the soon to be annexed areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Anything else from the public?
That's all, Mayor.
Councilmember Rusing, did you have something?
Thank you. I just would like to make a comment. I've heard from the public, both here and outside of the chambers, that they feel that this two weeks is just not enough. And I think in spirit of Prop 400, I'd like to propose that, you know, we give the public a full 60 days to look at this document and, and talk about it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of these public comments I also agree with. I think considering the long, long negotiations, the various agreements and amendments that have come forward, I think it's only appropriate that we give the public more time to digest what they've finally have had a chance to, to see. I know, talking about some of the specifics right now, when technically the development agreement has not yet been released, I think it's just more than appropriate that we give sufficient time for the public to look through this. Two weeks, I think, is clearly inadequate. 60 days might be maybe a bit too long, but I think at the minimum 30 days to have the public digest this, look at the concerns. Mr. Beverly's recommendation for perhaps a timetable and a cost-related guideline just for the public to kind of understand what they're looking at is something that we can provide that doesn't have any consequence to amendments or changes. I think that would be helpful. And also, one of the considerations for being able to get the severance and transfer conducted within three years seems like more than enough time, but working with the state sometimes, that may actually be considered rapid. And I would hate to see that the state's reluctance to move forward in a reasonable manner would jeopardize the severance and transfer of these acre feet. So I'd like to see maybe something in there that also obligates, if we can possibly do it, the state to be able to move forward without risking the severance and transfer. I think that's particularly important. Lastly, I think the fact that the acquisition of the W parcel based upon a reasonable price for that acquisition, which we don't know what it is, is a, is a rather gaping concern for us and the taxpayers. I think it's important for us to know in advance what this is going to cost so that we can make a proper decision on whether that cost is acceptable to us and acceptable to the party we're dealing with. So I think those are a number of comments that I'd like to see adopted and I think the community and the taxpayers and the public at large, I think, would appreciate a little more time and consideration for this complex developmental agreement. Thank you.
Anything else from the council at this time? Blair?
Yeah, I just, I have one, you know, I know it's a complex agreement, but you know, as long as I've said on this council, we have never given, been given information more than two weeks to study. I don't care how complex they are. We're lucky most of the time if we get it one week because that's how things move with the city council. So the bottom line is, is we're asking the city council to review documentation that we receive within one or two weeks constantly. To think that we need to give the public 60 days to review a document, I would agree with 30, but not 60. And I also would say that this needs to be resolved prior to the election. Everything becomes political and it drives me nuts. This council's been sitting here going through this development and not to have it complete before a new council comes in is ludicrous because of all the things that we've had to study. A new council coming in that hasn't studied it is absolutely the wrong thing to do. So to keep dragging our feet to say we need to wait for a new council, because I keep hearing that, and I've heard it before, that's not the righteous thing to do. We're all the ones that are taking the arrows. We need to decide on this thing.
Okay, anybody else? Councilman Sishtika?
Seems like the biggest problem is, is that nobody trusts anybody else. I mean, at some point, we're going to have to trust that the people who've been working on this thing, and that includes Saved Adels, have done it right. You know, I mean, we can banter back and forth, we can stick this out before the public. I have to tell you that most of the public is not going to read it. If we're waiting for everybody to read it and we're waiting for the proverbial city council needs to go door to door and tell people about this development agreement, then we're going to be waiting a long, long time and it's not going to happen. I just think that, that, you know, it's, it's a political situation. I don't mind waiting 30 days. 60 days is a little outside. Two weeks may be a little short, but you know, we could drag this thing on forever. At some point, the public has to take the responsibility to read this thing or to at least try and understand it. And if they don't, then that's their bet.
Mayor Breton?
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, John and Joe, for that presentation. I really appreciate it. And, you know, thank you to all of our city staff who have put in countless hours working on this project. This has been a huge, huge undertaking over the last four years and in particular since January, when the negotiating team started meeting on a weekly basis. You know, I think that I'm, I'm relatively comfortable where we're at with this development agreement. I'm, I'm looking forward to the next couple of weeks of public comment and what, what our constituents have to say about it. I would be comfortable with waiting 30 days, you know, if that's, if that's kind of where, where council's leaning. But, you know, I think that the folks who are really interested and who are going to read it and dive into it are going to do that in the next couple of weeks. And so I think, you know, waiting too much longer, we're going to lose momentum, we're going to lose steam. We've been, you know, pushing this project along because we need to get it taken care of so that we can move forward with some really great and exciting projects that we have planned once we can get this annexation done. And I'm, I'm looking forward to working on those projects here in the near future. But this is a big first step we need to take and I'm hesitant to wait too much longer because I think we're going to kind of, kind of run out of steam, like I said. So I would be comfortable waiting, you know, 30 days and voting on this at the beginning of July.
Very good. Anything else? All right, this meeting is adjourned.